All right, I'd like to have this meeting into order. If we could please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Patrick Milken.
Here.
Tom Brady.
Here.
Patrick Floss.
Here.
Martin Paul.
Kathy.
Thank you.
Okay. And if we could just note that those were excused for Lionel and Chad. Next up, Commission Secretaries' report on posting of the agenda. Presentations to the Commission. Is there any members from the public that wish to comment on items not on the agenda, but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission? Seeing none. Before we start with item number six, too, if there's anybody that wants to speak in public comment, if you could please grab a yellow card in the back and just write your name on there and turn it in with Sheila, that'll help organize it. So next up is new business. This is the 10th Street Bridge Scope Modification Presentation.
So, we have to make a special meeting. Thank you.
We're used to it.
A special item, and again, thank you all for your understanding. It's a special meeting. I've been scheduled regularly scheduled meetings. Special meeting to review this, uh, review of the 10th Street Bridge design options. You can be going to council. The next meeting to present this and wanted to get this in front of the pack in the community to review this project and these items, design options, prior to going to the city council. So what we have this morning is a presentation of the project itself, some history on the project. This project has been designed for a number of years, and we've been asked to, by the council, to look at some ways to save some money on the project. Project initially started out being relatively low-cost project, but over the years has gotten to be extensively expensive, has had some add-ons put onto the project, and it's grown to not only a bridge project, but projects that have really expanded outside the scope of just the bridge project that we'll talk about today. And we'll be asking the council to weigh in whether or not we want to continue to include these as part of the overall scope of the bridge project, and are asking the Commission this morning to weigh in on some of those items today as well. Each of the items that we'll talk about today do have other implications other than just money, and we'll talk about some of those today as well, but when it comes down to it, it's really about cost and how much money we can try and carve off the total number, the bottom-line number, which will make it easier for us to eventually build this bridge. So with that, I'd like to introduce Senior CIP Engineer, Farinah Maktaviji, who will be doing the presentation, and I'll be assisting as needed. Arne?
Yeah.
Thank you, Gary. Function.
Gotta lead it.
Um, functioning.
Time. Can you check? Picture of time. Thank you. There he is.
And Gary, um, functioning, um, outside my company, um, today we are here to discuss the construction of the bridge, design of the bridge, and options. So as part of this presentation, we, we're going to provide you with some background and project costs that we will provide, modification options, and, uh, these could be asked and questions that you may have, and we're going to have questions and discussion. So what is the purpose of the project? The purpose of the project was to build and rebuild the connector connect the east and west of the country, and also to make some improvement on the 10th Street. But then, this project is part of the city's general plan separation on 1978, and it will be one of the major east-to-west architectural connectors from US 101 to San Diego. Also, we provide access to New Glen Loma Ranch Fire Station. What is the project located? The project is located somewhere between US 101 and Central Street, South River, North to Do, and then, it's, um, so you can say between First Street and Chancan Avenue, but then, um, it's somewhere close to Christmas Hill Park and Baywatch High School. So this shows a little closer project location or project site. The 10th Street Bridge is exactly located between the De Enza Place, which is here, the De Enza Place, and U.S. Park Drive, or some people call it U.S. Park Drive. So what is the purpose of the project? The purpose of the project is not only to build or construct a bridge with four lane and sidewalk and bike lanes. It has some traffic safety improvements included. As part of those safety, uh, traffic safety improvements, it was like to add two ground zones at school, Baywatch High School, and also to add two roundabouts at U.S. Park Drive and Orchard Drive, and also some paving and striding improvement on 10th Street, and these driving after Prince Valley Street, um, the adjustment to the school, and extension of the 12th 101 to the New Glen Loma Development, uh, Glen Loma Ranch. So the 10th Street Bridge over U.S. Bridge, this is the bridge, is a three-point bridge with approximately 300 feet long and 76 feet wide, okay, and which includes eight-foot sidewalk, plus two bike lanes, and one lane, eleven-foot travel lane, and 16 feet median. It, for both of those median, it would like in future, it's going to change the two-lane bridge to four-lane bridge, so that then we won't remove the median and then the bridge would be a four-lane bridge. So, the total project cost is $27 million. The breakdown of the project is the construction cost is approximately $21 million. Design cost is $2.1 million. Environmental studies and permit cost up to date is $200 million, but then if they want to pursue further fund, we believe that cost will be doubled. There is a cost of retrofit location of $250 million. Also, usually, there is 10 to 15% of the total construction cost for construction management and inspection, which we believe will be $1.5 to $2 million. And in, depending on the regulatory agency requirements, we think that there is going to be mitigation and monitoring report, and plant establishment period, and also staff time about every minute. So we assume right now that the regional library acquisition, if they were high school, city, and central area, Hollywood Street, they work together, and then also there is no other property acquisition. But however, then Glen Loma Ranch Development, uh, is half a $6 million dollar. So in order to reduce the cost, we are presenting to you six scope modification options to get your feedback. In future slides, I will go through each of these options one by one with graphics and the cost savings and curve and con and staff recommendations. So the scope modification option number one is to reduce the width of the bridge, which is the 10th Street Bridge, from 76 feet to 64 feet by reducing the median. The median is 16 feet, we're going to reduce it to 4 feet. So the cost saving of this option is approximately $1 million. The pros of this option, it will not affect the users, also it will have less impact to the channel of education and public debt, and also heads can confirm that even with full Glen Loma development and build-out, it simply cannot be the four-lane bridge. The cons of this is the bridge compared to existing Broadway, which is on the east and west side, so it's going to kind of create the following. Also, since we are removing that 14 feet median, then we will not have a four-lane bridge, but then if we want to make in future, make a two-lane bridge to four-lane bridge, right now at 65% of the time, we need to include those provisions in our design. Then the cost saving would be half, so rather than being $500, a million dollars, we have $500,000. So the staff recommendation is to build narrower bridge. Option number two is to remove the U.S. Great Trail Whiskey Bridge, which is, and it will, this great bridge is providing class one bike and pedestrian path. The cost saving of this option is approximately $1.4 million. The pros is just the cost saving, and the cons of this option is, it's going to eliminate the continuous class one bike and pedestrian path that we have. Also, it's going to put the train usage to use the 10th Street and U.S. Park Drive in order to class the street, and then would add a second mix vehicle upgrade classing, which is going to be something similar to Miller's. So staff recommendation is construct the bridge. Option number three is to replace the roundabout at U.S. Park Drive with a stop control T-section. The cost saving of this option is approximately $750,000. This option will add, will reduce the construction cost and maintenance cost, and the T-intersection will be equal to zero. But the cons of this option is, in the future, the T-intersection will not function as a roundabout, and then it will have the level of activity. Also, in future, if we want to build a roundabout around the T-intersection, it will be more costly. And the third is, the T-intersection may need to be signalized in many of the decisions that we're going to make about option number two. So then, the cost saving, rather than going to be $750,000, it may be approximately $500,000. So staff recommendation is to replace the roundabout with a stop control T-intersection. Option number four is remove Gilroy High School's student drop-off zone between U.S. Park Drive and Orchard Drive. The cost saving of this option is approximately $400,000. The pros is removal of this option is not going to affect the design or construction of the 10th Street Bridge, however, it would be eliminating the safety improvement plan that we have with Gilroy High School, and also it would be against the expensive community outreach that we have with Gilroy High School and community. So staff recommendation is neutral on this option. Option number five is to remove the, remove the Gilroy High School's student drop-off zone between Orchard Drive and Prince Valley Street. The cost saving of this option is approximately $750,000. The pros is removal against, does not affect the construction or design of the 10th Street Bridge, but also it will eliminate the expensive impact that we're going to have on existing landscaping and vegetation and sidewalk and driveways and underground utilities that we have. The cons of this option, like option number four, is going to remove the safety improvement that we had with Gilroy High School, and also will be against all of the expensive community outreach that we give with Gilroy High School and community. So staff recommendation, this option is neutral. Option number six is to replace the roundabout at Orchard Drive with upgrade signalized T-sections. The cost saving of this option is approximately $1 million. The pros of this option is, it's going to eliminate the additional library that is required on the north side of the roundabout for 10th Street. Also, it will eliminate the long-term maintenance cost of the roundabout. And then this changing or removal of the roundabout and changing it to signal, it will be adjustment to the Prince Valley Street and 10th Street. And then, if signal not required, then we can use, considering the use of high-intensity activated class one or top signal for 10th Street. But the cons of this option is, it's going to eliminate the traffic community improvement, and then also it will still require some modification on the north side, on the driveway of the Gilroy High School, well, because that's going to be the north side of the intersection. So staff recommendation is, if we decided to signalize and if signal is warranted, then install signal. If signal is not warranted, then we can stop park for pedestrians. So this is like the summary of all of the six scope modifications, option one, two, six, with the potential cost saving in median and the staff recommendations. So the overall cost saving of the project, if we consider all of these six options, is about $5 million. So the staff is requesting to provide us with feedback on this six recommended option, and we will be presenting your specific answer on the number of questions.
Thank you. So maybe what we should do is, is we can start with just sort of general comments and questions, and then, and then let the public speak, and then maybe go through each individual item to kind of do like a thumbs up, thumbs down. Questions first. Does that sound good?
Sounds good.
So the, so the first question I have is on option number one, or actually, this is just to be a general one to all of them, and Gary, if you could weigh in on this. What kind of, what kind of bottlenecking would occur if, if we, because you said that the street width won't match the bridge if it's narrower? What kind of bottlenecking will occur throughout that whole entire corridor? Because right now, it seems to be free-flowing.
It does, it does free-flow on the, on the east side, in the residential area, the existing residential area. You do have two lanes of traffic in front of Gilroy High School. Going over the bridge, you would maintain two lanes of traffic, and then going into the Glen Loma area, you do have two lanes of traffic. So I think the only difference you would have with the narrower bridge is that you would go from a four-foot-wide median to a 16-foot-wide median, landscape median on the Glen Loma side.
As you go out into?
As you go into, as you go westbound towards Santa Teresa. So we would have to work with the Glen Loma folks and construct a transition to narrow and then provide a widening of the transition for the landscaping on that side. So it wouldn't be a bottleneck from a traffic standpoint, it would just have to be a transition from a landscaping standpoint.
Do you guys have any, anything you want to, else you want to talk about?
That's my only concern as well.
Yeah.
Any outreach to Glen Loma community on how that might affect them?
At this point, the Glen Loma folks have provided a traffic study that they've asked us to look at, to evaluate the overall mitigations for their project from a traffic standpoint that the city is considering right now. So all this is up for discussion, and we'll be going down a separate path.
Another thing I just want to point out, too, is that I know that the extensive outreach was done in 2008, and we're so far farther along as in a city compared to 2008, and I'm sure none of those, none of those people that were talked to then, their kids go to that school any longer. You know, we didn't come, become a complete streets community until 2012, and then over the last three years is when our state foster school program has just really blossomed, and so things are a lot different. And I'm, I'm hoping that, you know, I would really love to decrease traffic around schools and zones, and me personally, I'm, I'm, I'm less inclined to give sort of like that front row treatment for drop-off zones, especially at the high school level. I understand maybe at elementary, when these kids can't.
No questions now, not comments.
Go, so, you know, for me, these are things that, that I'm thinking about in my head as we go through each option. So I just want to make that, make that clear. So.
Are there any potential funding sources besides general fund for any of these things, especially the improvements by GHS?
For the bridge itself or for other options?
Or, you know, say like the improvements in option four and five?
We would be, we could work with the high school in terms of looking for other grant opportunities if the council were to decide not to build those, but at this point, we haven't specifically identified any funding sources yet, but we haven't really done the research for that either. Something we could look into.
I have a question. If warranted in the future, I haven't seen any numbers for this, but let's say there's a larger population growth on that side, maybe new housings develop, I'm not sure, what would be the cost to improve that bridge, the four-lane coverage of the building?
It would certainly be more to do it at a later time than it is now. I'm not sure we have that number, but it would be extensive. It would be millions of dollars, millions of dollars to widen it, but the, in looking at our general plan, in looking at the full build-out of Glen Loma and all the planning that we have right now, in our traffic model and our forecasting model, what we've looked at and identified is there's not going to be a need for four-lane thoroughfare east-west archery through along 10th Street there, which would increase the bridge.
Yeah, I agree with that, too. I mean, everything we're doing, talking about mode shifting and getting people to use mass transit, carpool, bike ped, especially by the time these kids reach high school, I don't, we can't build our way out of, out of anything. I don't really see a four-lane coming about. So what do you guys want to do? Do you want to open it up to the, to the public, and then, and then we can start going through one by one?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay. So first up, I have Albro. Basically?
Thank you. Good morning, district. This is Lester B. for Albro, this is the assistant superintendent of this district, or your, uh, school district. I'd like to apologize to our organization, the bodies, and the non-impact really, the area in my school district and the city department is a long, long part of, and we will try to, you know, also we've got, say, here, on the best, so obviously, we just love to partner with the city, area, just, uh, approximately 78, so, um, go along the relationship. I'm confident that I am also, uh, but it's in camp, and, uh, price there was points that, uh, a roll-up program that is 60 million contribution. You guys are quite professionals, and I just, uh, I'm just, uh, obviously, I'm, I'm already not familiar with this district, but we're committed to working with the city, with area, and, uh, we have to show that there are any issues that we can work collectively to, uh, for district savings, so, uh, if we're pursuing these options or alternatives to make sure that, uh, with the, uh, restrictions and, uh, but, uh, we can work together.
Do, Albro, can I ask you a question? Do you have any position, does the GOS have any position on the drop-off zones?
Well, obviously, uh, you know, the problem also for us is it's a very circulation, arguably, is a house circulation of certain drop-off zone inside the camp, it's obviously a, it's a way of, you know, after, uh, you will see, and the potential hazards, a lot of those questions, uh, that initiated, uh, several years ago. So because it's a viewpoint in the section, we're in the paper, obviously, when we build and re, uh, reconstruct a school, for instance, right off from now, we're in this exact same process, or working with the city, with the traffic study, uh, where we're going to drop off zone or adding to what we have, brought up currently, along from now, we have a drop off on the students, uh, so, and our new modernization is, uh, we're, it's actually part of inside our property, um, as well as drop off, or our students, so we're trying to take them off road essentially, to, uh, with the design, say, so, drop off students. Obviously, that's not, we have, uh, if you're a high school or not, a lot of guys will be hiding, uh, the problem is currently there, and any enhancements, uh, but we also understand that even if we don't have, if we don't have, uh, so, I'm going to, if we work together with the city to, to, uh, help us with that, it's a long-term issue for us, and obviously say, if you have any enhancements, obviously, if you have any, but, uh, we're also here this day to, uh, uh, it's, uh, others, uh, for years.
Thank you. If I could ask one question, Albro. If you were to rate in terms of priorities, the drop-off areas, would you prioritize one drop-off over the other, maybe the one, main one, as opposed to the one between UBS and or?
Yeah, it's, it's, I was going to ask you the drop-off zone, is it to a whole shirt in the section? So, yeah, so, uh, I'm sure it wasn't, uh, several years ago, we, uh, so, we're sensitive to that, we put, uh, it's not out there, so we have, I don't know what you call it, supervisor, supervisor, possibly, or, uh, but we just, uh, uh, especially not enough, obviously, added that safety and, uh, so, uh, again, I just wanted, uh, then, we're working to do, uh, uh, of these solutions, also, of these solutions, are, are more than, uh, any, kind of prioritization, uh, was, uh, improving, uh, we keep that on that , and of course, and, uh, to educate, to do that, or, uh, access to a parking lot, improve parking lot, go back to the student lot, and, uh, nobody wants to use that parking lot before, so, uh, you're, uh, you mean, I think we have to prove this to that parking lot, where it is, where the parking, uh, especially structures, uh, et cetera, so we made it up to, uh, to, uh, really not only be, uh, uh, a lot of parking lot, we, uh, so, you know, all that, uh, 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 so, your preference would be the drop-off zone between Prince
Valley and Orchard, as opposed to Orchard and UBS?
Yes, the one that's closest to that, uh, yeah.
And, and I, I know you know, just so the Commission and the public knows, we are working on interim solution to install a rectangular rapid flash beacon at that Orchard intersection. That was funded with the last CIP, so that's.
So that's working in design right now and hope to have that installed in the spring in advance of any of this work.
Thank you. Next up is Tom Fisher.
Morning.
Morning.
Just meeting you guys in the morning.
I know.
I've been a resident of the Lloyd for forty-four, forty-one years ago. This bridge was promised. Had a long time to think about it and a long time to design it. And I'm glad that we're finally getting to a point where we're maybe going to make some progress on this. My normal attitude on, on these types of things is that they should be built the way they're designed. Because when they value engineer, really what they're doing is they're taking value out. It's not an idea engineered where, boy, we're going to make it better by making it small. So in this particular case, I could probably support the reduction of the bridge width because, you know, I'm on the planning commission and I know what the future for that area holds. And there's not a whole lot of development beyond my Loma that's going to be out in that general area. I could maybe support replacing the roundabout at Orchard. I'm reluctant to say that because I saw what happened when they put the roundabout in at Lucesca and Thomas Road. Traffic there used to back up in all directions, curve. And I was a skeptic when they first decided to put that roundabout in. As soon as it opened, it relieved all the traffic. And that's when school is on, when school is off, all day long, that, that intersection is free and clear and you can get right through it. It made a big difference. In front of the high school, where during school hours, start and stop, and the traffic is like all schools, unpassable practically. I'm reluctant to say that it should take the traffic circles out. I think they're safe and they're efficient. And there is some maintenance costs, but once you get them built, they enhance the area around them. Same with the drop-offs. I think the drop-offs are important for safety for, for the students. I understand that you may not agree with that, I understand your reason. But that's not going to change the traffic patterns in the near future. And the problem with these projects is once they're built, it's pretty impossible to get a model. You know, the, the bridge at Lucesca and Thomas Road was built probably, been at least twenty-five years ago. Still, I've, I've been out there for thirty-three years and they built it after I went there, but not too long after, I don't remember the exact date. But, you know, that's only half the bridge because the other half is going to come. You know when it was coming? It was coming with Glen Loma. Somewhere along the way, somebody decided that instead of doing Glen Loma, we'll, we'll put this tenth street bridge in, Glen Loma development agreement. So I use that bridge every day, Lucesca Bridge. I don't believe that that other half of that bridge will ever get built in my lifetime. So when you reduce these projects, they have thirty, forty, fifty-year impacts. Now, this police station over here, for those of you who may not know this, you know, that, that police station was supposed to have underground parking. And they by engineered it to put the parking at grade and then built a building on top. That's why that building, it looks like a fortress instead of a community police station. So, you know, I, I commend staff for coming up with these alternatives. But I don't think that these alternatives are necessarily the best for the community. And when you guys make your recommendation, I'd like to take that into consideration.
Thank you, Tom. Next up, Enrique Diaz.
Hello and good morning. Thank you for the invite. One of the points that I have is more of a clarification. So I see the numbers, maybe, that, that, for your talk from the home, what I would like to see is, and maybe you can provide that tonight, of what the cost of each project is, so like one point one million, what is the total cost? Is it four million? And what I want to do is kind of compare like what the safety percentage is. So if it's one point one million, or, or exactly, twenty-five percent, safety percentage, that kind of thing. Kind of would like to see it for some of the, or for all options for that. And then the other one for point of clarification also is that the options can be presented like five million savings with total savings for all the projects, regardless of whether they were, was it fast thought they were pro, negative, or mutual on them. And the five million is all of them, but we can also present them that how much for each, but just the pro options that you guys were really much in favor of, which is a one point five, I think. And the one that you were negative on, which is two point four million, and the one that you were mutual on, two point one. So that we can all understand what it is.
Thank you. All right. So that brings it back to, to us. So what I would suggest is, is we go through each option. If there's any, you know, now since it's back in, in our shoes, if there's anything that you want to say about each of these projects, I would, I would say that that's, that's your time to let your, let your voice be heard and then we'll do a, like a thumbs up, thumbs down and just keep track of that for the recommendations.
To close the public.
Yeah, we'll close public comment.
Good, let's go slide by slide.
Yeah.
And if we could go to each of those slides, Farina. Narrowing the bridge from the seventy-six current design down to the sixty-four design.
Can I ask you a question on that? That's what was unclear in your presentation.
Go ahead, Tom.
You say the savings is a million dollars, but it's a half a million dollars extra in the design. So the savings actually is only a net five hundred dollars.
So right now, the bridge, it has a need, so.
Yes.
So in order for future, we would have to take the median and then make the bridge in each direction to link all the bridges. But then, if we're going to, that, if it's going to remove the median and narrow the bridge, so there is no median, so in future, we cannot, we cannot change the two-way bridge to four-way bridge, unless right now at sixty-five percent design, we include some provisions in our design, so that in future, we could change the two-way to four-way. So then the cost saving would be half of, five hundred dollars.
So what you're, so what you're saying, Farina, is if we want to continue to have the option to maintain it as a four-lane bridge in the future, changing the bridge design, bridge design at this point to maintain that four-lane configuration would only save half the money. So our proposal, that's not our proposal. Our proposal is to take the design, reduce the design to the narrower configuration, which would eliminate the future option to widen the bridge, which would save that full million dollars. Thank you. That was confusing.
We need to take that out of the council presentation. Do you guys have any comments on bridge?
I don't have any comments.
Any questions on?
Questions? Anything?
I've heard plenty about what the city thinks about this and what the growth on that side of town will look like. And obviously, we need to save money on this project. So as it stands, I can't really go against the staff recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's my position as well. I'm hearing that everybody who should have answered this thing is saying that we don't really need it to be four lanes.
Okay. So thumbs up, thumbs down, thumbs up, three thumbs up? Sean, thumbs up. All right. So let's go to option number two.
So again, this one would require bicyclists and pedestrians to go up to cross with the vehicles and staff is not recommending to remove the bridge.
And then from looking, it wasn't included here, from looking in the past, there was, people were concerned about the safety underneath the bridge?
Yeah.
And so will it still have natural light coming through during the daytime?
I don't believe so. I think that was a real expensive cost. What we'll do is make sure there's plenty of lighting, electrical lighting.
So there will be electrical lighting?
There will be lighting.
And overnight? Okay. And is, does it still, is it still supposed to have like a ten-foot ceiling?
Do you remember what the height was, Farina? Was it fourteen foot? It was adequate for, obviously, you couldn't drive a semi underneath it.
Yeah. But you could stand up on your pedals of a bicycle.
Absolutely. I, I think it was at least ten feet, about twelve feet high underneath there. Yeah, we'll verify that. And you could definitely stand on your pedals underneath.
And the width of it?
Remember the width? It was, it was full twelve foot.
Okay.
All right, so it will be welded. We want to make sure it's safety from a police standpoint, from our, our.
Okay.
Yeah, we received an extensive presentation on that, on this aspect some years ago. And I, I think when this subject of making changes to the bridge plans come up, our main concern was protecting this particular aspect. So I would, I would agree with the staff recommendation to keep it.
From a pedestrian and bicycle safety aspect, removing that traffic and giving them their own zone is definitely a part of our commission's goals. And I'm glad that staff is recommending that we go for three-lane. So I'm for that.
Okay. Me too. So thumbs up, thumbs down? All right. We support that. Option number three.
Any questions on that?
Although I do want to save the savings, I can, I can see just the way Tom said, that, that if there's a stop sign right there, that's just going to create just a long line of cars, especially during school. So for, yeah, for, for this one, that's the only thing that I can see is just it backing, backing up.
Yeah, I prefer a roundabout at this intersection. I have the same concerns. I have a fear that we would be alleviating that traffic in one area and then having backup in another.
I have a similar concern when the subject of the roundabouts come up. I suppose if we were going to make a recommendation to keep one over another, I'd be curious to review again if, if, if staff or anybody else has a preference. But in general, I'd just be concerned that we'd be creating future traffic problems that could be alleviated by having the roundabouts.
So option number three, thumbs up or thumbs down? Down. Option number four.
Option number four is for the multiple types of students to drop off, which means UBS five block and.
Like I said earlier, I'm, I'm, for less, less people trying to drop their kids off at school and more, I, I would love to have a system where if someone were to say, well, I've got five kids in my car and we decided to all commute together, I would love to give them preferential treatment and front row access to the school. But I just, I, I don't, especially with another one coming up and another option, I just, I, I don't agree with, you know, like a single occupancy vehicle taking their kid to school and then just driving right back home. I just think it adds traffic congestion and I don't even want it on the roadway to even suggest it. So that would be, that's where I feel on that.
In general, I would agree with what Commissioner Wilson is saying to some extent. And we can't build our way out of a lot of the issues that we're having with traffic. But realistically, when we're talking about attending a high school, people are going to be coming from very far away in some cases. And what we're talking about is providing something that could make things safer for drivers, pedestrians, people in the parking lot, bicyclists in general. And it doesn't preclude anyone from biking or walking to school, while it certainly doesn't kind of force them to see, hey, this is a bad situation, I want to avoid it. The thing is, is they don't tend to avoid it anyway. So I don't know if we're going to actually discourage them, their, their way out of continuing to drive there by not making these safety amendments. However, I, I am interested in investigating other funding sources besides the general fund for improvements on option four or five.
I have similar concerns with Commissioner Zachary. Our commission is tasked with getting more people out of cars and using bicycles and walking to the destinations. I understand that most people will never commit to that. And also, having a buildout in the drop-off zone near this high school, I could see would have a major improvement in traffic for that intersection. So it's one thing that I would have to support out of all of these options.
You know, the, the one thing about option four and five that I do agree upon is that if, if you do make this, you know, a wide space, especially enough for a, a bus, you know, maybe twenty, thirty years down the road, as, as life in the Bay Area changes and no more lanes are added, but you, you choose mass transit and maybe, you know, these could be reserved as bus zones and they're already be built in there. So, so option number four, what do you guys think? Thumbs up, thumbs down? Thumbs down?
So thumbs down would mean that we're suggesting that we not support funding this through the general fund?
Yeah.
That's how we'll record it.
Well, you guys already both have your thumbs, thumbs down anyway, so. That's, that's the, that's our VPAC recommendation, I put thumbs up.
All right. Two to one. Okay, option number five.
Option number five is to remove the given high school, it's in Orchard Drive and East Side.
So this is the second of the two drop-off. This is the major, the major one, double-loaded one.
My only question about this is that, is there any way to break apart the drop-off zone and the center median and striping? Or is that all one package with the wrought iron fence to prevent the, the crossing over and preventing the U-turns? Is that, is that broken off or is that all one deal?
Can we go back to the graphic, previous slide?
Yeah.
So this, this project, if I remember right, from the description in the staff report, includes not only sidewalk, now, the previous one had sidewalk improvements on both sides. This one has, it's a, it's a, it's a duck out, if you will, on the south side for double-loaded. It's a median island or it's the center island with sidewalk. So you could drive the cars below and above the drop-off zone, so you could double-load the drop-off. It's got a landscape island there where this current sidewalk location is, median landscape island with fence, improvements that then tie into the roundabout there, Orchard. We could look at a number of different options there. It's all about the safety improvements and the negotiations that happened a number of years ago before certainly any of my staff was here. And so, you know, you're looking at, a package is what we have here. Can we break it up potentially? That's not what we have though in terms of what's being presented though here, but we could certainly take that down as comments and feedback from the commission.
I personally really like this drop-off zone. I like the, it can be future built out to something different. Does not have to always be single occupancy vehicle, right? It could always be changed to a bus service. It could always be changed to carpools, vans, whatever. And I like the airport style of it. So once you're in there, you're committed, you're not, you can't just make a U-turn and come out of it. I think that it's on a nice straightaway section. So I think merging back in there, not having to realize, oh, yeah, I'm going to merge back in and then I'm about to hit that roundabout. Or I'm going to merge back in and then I'm going to go to that rapid flashing beacon or Hock possibly, or more, just more kids. I think there's less kids down there and, you know, if, and I understand that there's certain people that still want drop-off zones. But for me, that, my vision of the future, twenty, thirty years from now, that, that's a good drop-off zone location. I like the configuration of it.
If I can comment on that. Anytime you have a drop, significant drop-off zone like that forces parents or, or whatever to drop off, you're going to get folks that don't want to use that drop-off zone and want to just drop off on the north side and then let their kids run across the street, which is why you have then that, that fencing cross there to eliminate that kind of behavior.
Yeah.
So I think if you do have that drop-off zone, you've got to have the fencing in the middle. If you've got the fencing in the middle, you can't just put it in the middle of pavement. You've got to have some kind of median landscaping, median area. You know, the median area, you've got to landscape it. So I think it, it becomes almost a package deal at that point, that the safety improvements there, you've got to restrict the left turns in and the left turns out, which are going to bog up the, you know, the right turn in, right turn out only in the drop-off zone. Just, so just from a traffic standpoint, you've almost got to improve.
It has to take it together. Yeah, I, I love that center median too. Any other?
No, I agree.
Okay. Okay, so I'm thumbs up on that. Thumbs up? Yes.
Option number six is to replace the roundabout at Orchard Drive, at least six miles in the intersection.
So this one, I wish I could see the future because I love the free flowing of roundabouts, but I also do know.
If I could just do one quick, go back to the graphic. In looking at this graphic, I'm not sure that our designer did a real, real good justice on this design. I believe in looking at this, the circle is located too far to the bottom.
Like going into, Gilroy?
I, I think it actually has to be located further up, because to provide adequate traffic calming, it's got to be located in the center of the intersection. If you're going in the westbound direction, if you don't have an adequate deflection, you're going to get, you're not going to get the speed reduction for a traffic calming device. So by pushing that further north, you then start affecting those properties to the north, and I believe there's need for property acquisition. So I think this project is actually going to be a more expensive project, and in terms of cost savings, it's, you know, it's going to be more than a million dollar project, because you're going to have to go knock on those two property owners' doors and ask for property acquisition. So I, I really have a problem with this traffic circle here, and this roundabout, and I'm really, I've, I've really got an issue with this.
Yeah, I know, I, I agree.
If anything, I'd really like to put a signal here, if anything, or a hawk.
A hawk. Yeah. Yeah, because anything just to keep traffic flowing, that's why I think a hawk would be great, because it would just be, you would just need it, right, for that short time before school and after school. And for the rest of the time, it's, it's just a clear visualization, go through that intersection. So that's where, that's where I feel about this.
Yeah, I agree.
I would agree as well. I wish we could have more hawks in the city, they're really effective in managing traffic and all pedestrians to cross more safely than other current developments in our city.
So again, the intent is at this point to look at, look at a single, single stop word, but look at the hawk in, in the interim, we're going to be putting in R.
Yeah, which you already have approval for. So thumbs up, thumbs down on a, a roundabout? All right, thumbs down. All right, thank you. Okay, so just for the, Gary's written it down, I'll be also writing down our recommendations and submitting those in a formal write-up for our next content calendar on the twenty sixth. And yeah, if there's nothing else that anybody else has to say?
No.
Good? All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks for doing this.
Oh, yeah.
So scheduling, I really thank your staff, I was able to review that last night.